Welcome. We'll call to order the Fort Mill Council meeting for Monday, March 12th, 2018. I would like to thank all of you for attending. We have such a happy night tonight with many good things happening in our community. Please, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. The things that we do, we'd like to get through and show honor and respect to all that are here, so if you would, please do that as a service to everyone. You also are free to make comment during comment sections, but if you have not signed in, do we have anyone signed in? Okay. Because that ordinance says pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. And I will tell you, it doesn't say it, but we also are restricting comments to, isn't it three minutes? Three minutes for comments. And that's just so we can provide equity for everyone that wishes to speak on any topic. So, thank you for joining us tonight, and we're looking forward to our meeting. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And remain standing for the invocation. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings of life. We pray that you give us wisdom and understanding that we can conduct the town's business in our honorable manner. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Council, you have the minutes from the February 12th council meeting and the February 26th council meeting. Do we have any addendums, changes, deletions?
You're in that. Who to accept?
I have a motion to accept and a second. Any further comment? I have a motion to accept. Aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Virginia, it's unanimous. Public hearing. Public hearing item number one. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article II. Requirements by District, Section 24, COD/COD-N. You should have to read this stuff, I'm just telling you. Quarter overlay district so as to clarify the reviewing authorities for projects in the same COD/COD-N overlay district, to remove the streetscape lighting standards in the COD/COD-N overlay district, to amend the pedestrian pathways, parking, and signage requirements in the guess what? COD/COD-N overlay. I'm gonna qualify for Stalwart District. And to provide for alternative means of compliance for public uses in the COD/COD-N overlay district. Thank you. All right. Do we have a presentation, I believe?
Mayor, this is just a public hearing.
I'm not making fun of your work, Mr. Pettit, I promise.
Oh, no, that's all right, absolutely. I have to read it every day. This is just the public hearing for second reading of the ordinance, taking a few tweaks to the ordinance mainly, as you have already mentioned, removing streetscape lighting standards, amending the language for pedestrian crosswalks, amending signage to allow for some LED signage in the overlay, and again, providing some alternative means of compliance for public uses. And we do have this on the agenda for second reading.
Thank you. And I believe, Dennis, you told me that we don't have anyone signed up, so with no public comment, I believe we can close this public hearing. Thank you. Presentations. Presentation number one. Acknowledgement of achievement for rank of Eagle Scout to Daniel Sessions and Arian, please help me with this last name so I don't mess it up.
Sharesta.
Sharesta. Is that right?
Yep.
Oh, good. Good. Come on down. I don't have anything to read, right, Virginia? Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
So, how hard was it?
Very.
How long did it take you?
Couple months.
That's all? That's pretty good. So, what was your project?
My project was, well, I currently attend St. John's United Methodist Church, and the project was to go through their old archives, to catalog them, digitize them, and then build a display case for some of them.
Who's the scout leader that helped you? Hi, if you have any other folks like this, I bet we've got some things we could do. Wonderful. I will tell you, I've learned a lot about Eagle Scouts and scouting recently, and I'm just in awe. Tell me about how long it took you and what your project was.
To actually build it, it was four weekends. I am a member, I'm a student at Nationport High School, and so there were a couple of students there who have passed away over the years. So, my project was to build a memorial for them, to honor them.
Oh, my goodness. Like a commitment from scout masters, the next time we're honoring such special people, could we have pictures of their projects or something that we can put up on the board so the rest of our community could see the benefit that they bring to us? Couldn't be more proud of the two of you. Mr. Sessions, Mr. Sharesta?
Yes.
Oh, boy. All right, let's give him a round. Yep. Yep, now you're gentleman. You cover up. Fat lady in the middle. You're getting far too young, Mr. Sessions. Thank you so much. Guys, this is really, really an achievement. There are people here tonight that have been Eagle Scouts. Our Honorable George Shepherd from Tika K has been an Eagle Scout. Can I see a show of hands? Wayne, you an Eagle Scout?
I am not, but I'd like to make a correction.
Please.
This guy was a Eagle Scout.
He is. It's a lifelong commitment, correct?
Correct.
Josh, would you like to help me with lifelong commitment too? This is Wayne's son, Josh. Put him on the spot, but there was a Jeopardy question that asked, what is the motto for Boys and Girl Scouts? And, oh, I got it. But we'll be prepared, right?
That's right.
So, tell us, Josh, it's a lifelong commitment.
It is. Yeah, I was fortunate enough to join scouting when I was in third grade back in Anderson, South Carolina, and moved here when we were in fifth grade. And I've been involved ever since. I'm one of those guys that just never left, even through college. But it's a pleasure to know these guys and their scout master and the rest of their leaders from Troop 130 have done a great job, so thank you all.
And what is your scout master's name?
Brenda Wright.
Hi, Brenda. Thank you for guiding them into something that will serve our community in perpetuity. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I need to correct you on one thing. It's the first time ever I'm correcting you.
Goodness.
I am not an Eagle Scout.
You're in my house.
I am not an Eagle Scout. I am not honored to be an Eagle Scout.
Oh, I'm a junior.
No, ma'am. I'm not honored to be one. I do sit on the Eagle Board of Review, which is phenomenal to see these young men come through and present their projects to a bunch of gray-haired men or gray-haired women and be as respectful as they are. It amazes me. We have had so far this year eighteen Eagle Scouts come through York County.
Wow.
Which only six percent of all scouts become Eagle Scouts. So, that's phenomenal that we got eighteen. Sorry, five percent that comes through. And that's eighteen.
They're five-ski, then, I guess.
But I would like to invite everyone to come to the SBRAT building on April 19th at 6:30. It's when we talk about girls and scouting. So, we're gonna talk about how we're gonna do it in York County, so please come and have your questions. It's gonna be an interesting ride. Thank you.
No, my thanks. And guys, let's support our scout family. They do good things for us. Thank you so very much. Congratulations.
Mayor, just one more comment, please. American Legion is here, the young.
I've got a proclamation.
I know you do, but this is something else. With the American Legion, they're about to give every Fort Mill troop donation that's coming up in a couple of weeks. So, we wanna give a round of applause to the American Legion.
I'm comfortable now. All right. Good job. Is that Max? This one I'll have to wear glasses for. Do we have someone from the American Legion that I'll be presenting this to? We do? Come on up.
I have new hearing.
I forgot where I was for a moment, too. Come on up. You're not due to this. Name? I've met you a hundred times.
Oh, yes, we have, yes. And you'll see me again.
Perhaps. Let's hope so. Let's hope so. Would you tell them your name? Tell the audience your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Commander of Post 43, Fort Mill, American Legion, Mike Craven. Yes.
Mike helps us.
I've been Commander four years now.
Four years. And Mike and all the folks at the American Legion, not only did they serve us by making us free, but they help us so much with all of our community events as we recognize those folks that laid down their lives or were willing to lay down their lives for our freedom. Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina proclamation. Whereas the American Legion was founded in Paris, March 15th, 1919, and was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16th, as the wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization, which now numbers more than 2.4 million members, men and women. In over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, the youth of America, and its citizens, and, excuse me. Whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas the American Legion will be celebrating their 100-year anniversary over the next 15 months in a campaign, I don't like birthdays like that, to recognize legionnaires in our community for their many contributions. And whereas our local Fort Mill American Legion post, number 43, works tirelessly to impact our youth by contributing to the Boy State Education Program and supporting American Legion baseball. They also provide for the needs of our local veterans in their homes and in hospitals, giving back to those who have served for our freedom and liberty. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the Town of Fort Mill declare March 15th, 2018, and on this date and subsequent years be proclaimed American Legion Day in the Town of Fort Mill.
Thank you, Sheldon.
And I need to add something. The American Legion does more than what's listed on the proclamation. When I was in high school here many moons ago, they would allow us to sell hamburgers and hot dogs at football games to earn the money for our uniforms, for the sports and athletics. I was cheerleader. Those weren't funded. So, we were able to do that, and it was because of the folks at the American Legion. They've hosted sporting banquets in their building. They support the Boy Scouts. They have speech contests and groom people for public speaking. There's so much that they do, and they're so valuable in our community, so I want to thank you. My dad was a veteran, and I really appreciate it.
The, I thank the Town of Fort Mill immensely for this recognition, and also what they've done recently with allowing us to build an extension on our building, to modernize the building, and get rid of this antiquated old people somewhere to go drink and smoke thing. It's not like that. We're bringing in the youth, we're bringing in younger members, and we want to integrate and do more within the community, and this allows us to do that, and I thank you all so much.
Oh, thank you. It's my pleasure. Thank you. All righty. We now will have presentation number three. Our School Board Referendum Committee. Is Andrew here? Andrew, hi. How are you?
Excellent. How about yourself?
Good. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
I have Kristen Vining with me as well, another one of our, the co-chairs on the referendum committee.
And you collapsed that down to a three-minute presentation?
Absolutely.
Three minutes, Andrew.
We'll try. So, this is who we are. You guys, we'll zoom through this. This presentation normally takes about, what, 25 to 30 minutes we've been doing it in, so we'll try to shrink that down to 10 or 15 as much as we can. Who we are not, this is the part of the presentation where we essentially say we're focused on the referendum here. Let's not talk about growth. Let's not talk about the problems you have with your kid and your school. It's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about, you know, the need we have for building new schools. A number of folks say, well, why can't you just turn them away, send them somewhere else? These are the laws that I think everyone's aware, we can't do that for. Real quickly, I will try to make this quick. In the state of South Carolina, there are two buckets of money for school districts. The first one is operational funds. Those are recurring costs that the district has to pay for every year. Eighty-eight percent of that operational budget in Fort Mill is salaries, all the way from a kindergarten assistant all the way up to the district superintendent's salary. We have other things in there, electricity, supplies, books, other things that we have to use on a recurring basis that can't be used over a number of years. All of that has to come out of the operational funds. What the bond referendum for is to provide additional capital funds, and that's what we're here to talk about today, building schools, purchasing land, replacing and purchasing new technology, major maintenance, and purchase buses. But real quickly, on operational funds.
You don't have to hurry that much. I was just giving you grief.
Oh, okay. On operational funds, Act 388 in 2007 and 2008, not only did it devastate the sort of educational funding in South Carolina in general, it's had a particularly bad impact on the Fort Mill School District because a large portion of what used to be a fluctuating operational budget was made static in 2008. Now, in 2008, the Fort Mill School District had around 8,500, 8,000 students, whereas now we're at 15,100 students. So, as we've grown over time, that bucket of money has stayed static as the district has grown by 85 percent or so. So, that has resulted in significant operational funding challenges in the district. And Dr. Epps, who couldn't be here today, he actually had a meeting to attend on the impact fee that we're also working on, that we'll talk a little bit about as well. But the administration and the board does a great job in doing everything they can to optimize the operational funds in the district. There are a couple of things in this referendum that helped do that as well, but that's the reason we build schools the way we do, to make them as operationally efficient as possible because for every dollar that we can cut back on electricity and other supplies is a dollar that we can spend on teachers. And essentially, that's what the district has tried to do as much as possible. So, we do have a significant need for more schools. So, the bond referendum that's up for vote just eight days from today, on March 20th, is in total $190 million. It is for three elementary schools, some additional technology, more land for future school sites, some major facility maintenance on a number of our aging campuses and buildings, and additional buses to support the population. So, I'll go a little bit more into each of those categories. First, we'll focus on enrollment and the need to build additional schools. As many of you probably know, we have two schools in the district that are currently frozen, meaning new students that come into that attendance area get sent to another school to attend school. Dobie's Bridge Elementary, as well as Gold Hill Elementary, who, as you're probably aware, have had a significant amount of buildings. Those schools, Dobie's Bridge opened in 2014 with about 400 students, and they have grown so much that now at 975 students, they're over their capacity and needed to be frozen. Similar story with Gold Hill. They have a smaller capacity, but they're frozen as well, and those require students to be overflowed to Fort Mill Elementary School and Tika K Elementary School, which creates quite a troublesome process to actually bus students back and forth. It reduces the amount of time they have to spend in class each day, as well as it gets them out of their actual community to attend schools. Other kids in their neighborhood, for example, are going to different schools, and it makes for a number of different challenges. Not unable to be dealt with, but it does produce quite a few challenges. What is even more challenging on the next slide is where we actually have the capacity of elementary schools going above, or, excuse me, the projected enrollment going above the actual capacity. So, if you see on this next slide where the black line crosses the dotted red line at the beginning of next year, we anticipate that at the beginning of next year, all of the elementary schools in Fort Mill will be at their operational capacity. And that obviously causes many challenges. You have to put more students in classrooms, you have to start offering less services, you have to spread out lunchtimes, those sorts of things that we don't want to have to do on a normal course of business, but because growth has accelerated so rapidly over the past couple of years, for the past couple of years alone, the district has added 1,000 students a year. That's just kind of a mind-boggling number to me, whereas before, even when we were having significant growth, we were talking about 600 students a year, whereas now it's 1,000 students. And if you look at the impact fees that have been generated this year in terms of pure numbers, last year, what drove the sort of 1,000-student increase was about 1,550 new homes paying impact fees to the district, whereas through the first two-thirds of the year, that number alone is over 2,200. If you increase and keep that rate up through the rest of the year, that would be a 91% increase this year over last year alone. And last year caused the 1,000-student increase. So, if you think about that impact on the school district, it's not just we're trying to deal with a steady pace of growth, we're actually trying to deal with accelerating growth. And that's what causes this issue right here, where you actually have projected enrollment going above a capacity before we're able to deal with it by building new schools. On the next slide, middle schools, a little bit better story, where we would open up the new middle school in the year, enrollment would surpass capacity, but that sort of shows the need to build a middle school now. It takes a little bit longer to build a middle school, it takes two years for an elementary school, it's about three years for a middle school, just because you have different facilities, it's, you know, fields, all of those types of things that take a longer time. So, this is the total of the schools that we have in there. As we said, the district does a lot to optimize our operational dollars. One thing you'll notice is there's a cost difference in number 10 and number 11 elementary school. We came up with very creative names for them at this point, but about a $2 million, $2.5 million difference, and that is around elementary school number 11 having a satellite bus parking lot, whereas right now, all of the buses every day start out of and end at a facility right next to the district office, which is sort of centrally located in the district, but it requires all of the buses to sort of travel their full route away and at the end of the day. It requires more bus driver time, it requires more fuel, all those sorts of things. So, the idea with elementary school number 11 is that we would have a satellite bus parking lot so that we can handle the additional buses we're looking at purchasing, but also make it more operationally efficient to operate those buses. Middle school six, again, the price comes in at a little over $53 million and would open at 2021. The capacity of the schools, that's something we've gotten a lot of questions about. I grew up in Rock Hill, and I moved to York County in, I think, 1987, and I think my elementary school had about 550 students, and man, we thought that was big. We are building pretty large elementary schools. Some of the questions have been, well, why can't you build bigger ones? Well, we could, but there's two things. Number one, we want to have community-based schools, right? There's a lot of literature around how much more, you know, efficient and how much better education community-based schools are able to provide, and when you get 2,000-member schools, you're really moving away from that, as well as there's actually a point at which a larger school becomes more expensive to build, right? You have to build a cafeteria that's twice as big, which costs more than twice as much, those types of things. There's sort of a point at which you're not, you know, achieving that optimal efficiencies as well. One new note on the bottom, we have around 20,000 homes existing in the Fort Mill School District, and we have around 11,000 already approved to build. So, one of the questions we've gotten and we had in the last referendum, well, why can't we just stop building, right? Or let's vote no against the referendum to send a message and ask the county council and the two towns and cities to stop approving new buildings. Well, that's great. You could do that, but even if you did that, we've still got 50% growth that the district would have to account for, right? Those are approved.
Those are great numbers, but I'd kind of like to just add a little nuance to the perception. Number one, five years is incorrect. I know of two of the largest developments that are in your 10,000, and they're on a 20-year plan. They're not on a five-year plan.
Okay. Well, those are the numbers we got.
I understand, but I also think that it's critical. There are times we can't say no.
Absolutely.
There are times we cannot say no.
No, absolutely.
If it's zoned that way, and I'm not trying to interrupt, but because this is at our meeting and it's going to be cast, if I hear something that I know people have already had an issue with, and I read the same comments you do.
Yeah.
God bless you. I'm just saying, you know, I want to make sure that there's clarity. We can't say no at times. If it's zoned that way, if it's given that way, we can't say no.
Yeah, there's two things that I tell people. Unfortunately, state law in South Carolina makes it extremely hard to prevent people from using their land how they want to use it, right? It's just the state law in South Carolina, which makes it very difficult for either the county council or either one of the cities to say, no, you can't do that. But additionally, I mean, you have to think about sort of the human aspect. Dr. Smallsy at the district office tells a story about how the land at the district office came to be acquired by the district, right? And it was a family that had grown up in Fort Mill for a long time, and they took the stand, right? And they said, we're not gonna sell, we're not gonna sell out. And the district ended up buying it out of bankruptcy, right? That's how much they had a conviction to not sell out. So, I mean, there is a human aspect to the other side as well, right? And I completely understand with the position that all of these various entities are in, but in the end, you know, this is growth that the district has to deal with, right?
You don't have a choice.
Right. The district is trying to play the hand we've been dealt, right? And that's what we try to tell a lot of people. We can try to change things, but in the end, we've got, you know, 50% growth approved, no matter what time horizon, that even if everybody were to stop it, which I don't, like you said, I don't think it's actually possible.
It's not.
We still have to deal with that, right? So, other things in the referendum, it's not just the building. So, overall, the district tries to purchase capital, eligible items through capital funds, and all of these other things fall into those buckets. So, if we didn't put these items in a referendum, we would have to buy them out of operational funds, which means we have $20 million over five years to spend less on teachers, right? So, we try to put these things so that we can use our operational dollars for operational purposes. Other districts in the county and state don't necessarily have to do that because they don't have the same operational problems that Fort Mill has. But in this referendum, it's 20.5 million dollars. Again, that looks out over five years, which if you think about technology, most, all technology has to be replaced over five years. So, that's replacing most of the technology as we go through this next five-year horizon. It also has increased mobile devices in both our elementary and middle schools, and that's primarily driven around sort of what is the now current most efficient way and most effective way to educate our students, and that is with increased mobile devices. It's not taking the stand that Rock Hill or other districts have said and said, every student is gonna have their own device that we're gonna provide. It is a one-to-one ratio in middle schools because that's what we've determined as a district is the optimal learning environment. It is a lower ratio at the elementary schools, right? It doesn't make sense for a kindergartner to have an iPad the whole time, right? We have some very basic things that make that not the optimal learning environment. So, it is increasing those ratios and providing those on a recurring basis as well. One of the important things to note here is, you know, when I was in school, and I'm assuming most everyone here, you know, I remember taking tests, and I had to bubble in a little Scantron, it was called, right? That's not how it's done now. It's all online. So, the middle schools, for example, have eight different tests that they have to provide in the last four weeks of school. So, without the increased devices during that last four weeks of school, there would be no mobile device for any educational purpose. It would strictly be for testing. So, that's a lot of the reason that we ask for increased mobile devices and to replace all of the technology equipment. Major facility maintenance, as we have older buildings coming due for the various needs as you do in your home, whether it be air conditioning, replacing the roof, replacing concrete, replacing cafeteria equipment, all of those things come due as well. Land, there is money for additional land. One of my favorite things about the land category is land that the district owns, is land that houses aren't being built on, as well as even if you look through the financial crisis, the value of land never stopped, so it is actually a good investment for the district to go ahead and purchase it when it is available. Additionally, we have the problem in Fort Mill where it is the smallest geographical district in the state. district in the state. However, it's getting to be one of the larger ones. And as it continues to grow, the actual amount of parcels available continues to shrink. If we don't purchase land now, it actually might not be available when we need to build a school five, six years in the future. And additional transportation to allow for our increased populations. While the state has provided for the swapping out and new buses, they have not allowed for, for growth in terms of number of buses. One of the, the fun facts I like to tell is the, the last time the state provided buses to the district, they purchased retired buses from the state of Kentucky that they then doled out to our students in South Carolina, which is obviously not optimal and causes a lot of problems with buses breaking down and operational issues as well. Total bond referendum, $190 million. No way to get around it. That's a lot of money, right? There, there's just no way to get, get around it. But that's what the district has to do in order to optimize our operational funds as well as provide seats for the new students that are coming. You know, we would love nothing more than to not have to ask for $190 million and have another way of, of taking care of this. We've looked at all of those different things. The district has time and time again. And unfortunately, we're in the position where we just need to build more schools. There's two ways to pay for that. Again, the referendum is permission to take out the mortgage. There's two ways that we can either pay for that. It's through increased taxes at the amount of $99 a year for the average home in Fort Mill. However, we hope that's not going to happen, and the district is working with the county council, which I'm sure all of you are aware, to pass an increased impact fee for the new homes. And that would really, one of the questions that, you know, I personally had in the last referendum was why can't we make these people that are causing all of this growth pay for it? Well, that's the idea with the new impact fee, where we've got an independent, you know, expert in impact fees doing a very detailed study on Fort Mill specifically right now and saying, what is the cost of each new home in the district? We hope for that to come back within probably three or four weeks, and that'll start going for the planning commission at the county in early April. So if that impact fee passes at, to either $10,000 or more, there would be no increase to, to taxes in the Fort Mill School District, so. Real quickly, these are some of the impacts that happen if you have to allow for students' seats without being able to take out a mortgage and build new schools. Unfortunately, you have to start adding mobile units, trailers, and you have to take that out of the operational budget. So that's about $4 million a year if you assume the, the current growth rate of 1,000 students. At some point, we're going to be adding 40 trailers a year. That'll cost about $100,000 per trailer by the time you get done with all of the state requirements for those. It's $4 million a year that you're not spending on teachers. And that's, not only do you not spend that new money on teachers, but you actually have to find a teacher somewhere in the district to occupy that trailer, right? So you have to start cutting other areas as well. And it very quickly starts producing all of these others. Fewer teachers, smaller older buses, reduced related arts. We're not, we're not making any more music classrooms. We're not making the cafeteria any larger by adding trailers. You unfortunately end up in a situation where, you know, at some schools, you might have to start lunch as early as 9:30 to be able to get everybody through the process there. So with that, that's pretty much all of the detail. Are there any questions on any of the, the detail? I know if folks have been following online, we've, we've handled quite a, quite a few questions online, as, as Mayor Savage was alluding to, but.
Counsel? I have a couple of comments, but I'd like.
I'm confused on these numbers that you're pulling. You got 19,000 home, existing homes in the Fort Mill School District. Fort Mill School District would include Fort Mill, TDK, and the unincorporated area. I know for a fact, we've got about 12,000 sitting in Fort Mill. So you're telling me between the two, or closer to 13, so between those other two entities, there's only 6,000 more homes?
If I may, in the town of Fort Mill, we have about, it's, it's four, 5,000 units. The population was.
It's easy to get units versus.
People.
People versus students, because I've often said, your population in the school district is fairly equal to the population in the town of Fort Mill.
Yeah.
And that is a subset of the unincorporated area, and then there's TDK. So I do think, you know, that it's really easy for anyone. Quite frankly, Andrew, one of the most jarring things I've experienced since being mayor was that many people don't know which of those they live in. I don't say that in jest right now, and I like to laugh, but a lot of people don't know. And it, it's really intriguing to me, you know? But then again, when you drive across Surfer Creek and you're in Indianland, you have Fort Mill address, it's a little bit understandable. So yes, I, I hear what you're saying, Jamie. There's some, there's some areas that are extremely confusing.
Yep.
To people.
And then we have 10,000 homes permitted, and that's the entire school district?
No.
Because I read on your thing where you said it was Fort Mill had 10,000 alone.
No, it's Fort Mill School District.
Okay.
How come that's not reflected in this number then?
I'm sorry?
Fort Mill itself, the town of Fort Mill has 10,000 homes permitted out in the next 20 years, and that's a number that keeps on getting kicked out, but that doesn't reflect all of the new homes that are in the entire school district.
Is that the number over 20 years in the town of Fort Mill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this, this number in this presentation was meant to be the entire district.
For, for the next five years. But that's maybe where I got confused over the five years.
That's correct.
Because I saw the 10, and I'm like, no, I know our two largest ones are spread over 20 years.
That's correct. So this, I apologize. This is in the overall Fort Mill School District. All of these numbers are specific to the overall district.
Thank you for the clarification.
Not, not just the, the town.
I apologize.
No, I apologize.
But you can understand how complicated it can get.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
So if the referendum passes, and then the impact fee, slide 13, that's, run that by me one more time, Andrew. So we get the 190 million will, and, and the impact fee has to pass for no increase. Is that right?
That is correct. If the referendum passes and the increased impact fee passes, there would be no increase to taxes.
Okay.
Now, there would actually be, depending on the amount the council passed, if they pass sort of the full amount at what the impact fee study comes back at, which we expect to be more than $10,000, then the school board would have the, the option to actually lower taxes.
Right.
As well.
Okay. I thought that's what I was reading, but I just want to make sure I was understanding it.
And if the referendum passes and the impact fee does not, so the worst-case scenario, that we're trying to be very transparent to, to everybody in the community, on the average home of $250,000, it would be $100 a year.
That's the worst case.
Yep.
Got it.
So just so I understand, what's our break even for what the impact fee is versus doing a bond referendum? So say the impact fee approval comes in, an additional $5,000 for a total of 7,500. Would that mean only half of the bond referendum would be allocated towards these projects?
No. No. So there, there are actually two different items. So if the referendum passes, they're going to do everything in the 190 million, right? In order for there to not be a tax increase, we would need an increased impact fee. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the number's around $7,000.
An increase of 7,000.
Total of 7,000.
Total 7,000.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So because they're back-to-back, the referendum vote is one day, the impact fee vote is the next day. Is that correct?
Well, it's going to take five different votes.
Okay.
It's two at the planning commission in early April and early May.
Okay.
Then two at the county council, that would happen in May.
Okay.
And then the third and final one would be at the first county council meeting in June.
I guess just reading through the litany of all the threads, there are few people that understand that. Further.
And, and real quick, I didn't cover it, but the reason we didn't want to wait for that, so that, number one, it was fairly uncertain when that would actually happen. And we didn't know, oh, if we set the referendum for, for June 15th, that means we'll know the final impact fee number. It's just now becoming clear, I think, last week or a couple of weeks ago, when that process was going to proceed with how long the study took. But we didn't want to wait even until May, if we would have thought it would have been in May, because if you wait and you start the construction of those buildings two months later, then it delays the opening of the buildings an entire year.
Do you know, and may have to get Mr. Bolden involved over there, the schools that you have land for that's not being built on yet, are they on this side of 77, other side? How many do we have? How many parcels do we have open?
I think there's six currently, and they're spread throughout. There's some on each side. I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, but I know there's one on 21. There's one adjacent to where the current, the new high school's being built. There's one in Mason's Bend, and I don't remember the other three. Oh, White's Road, there's another property out behind the new high school. That's four. I'm missing two.
21 just south of Gold Hill. And then 21, really off Gold Hill extension, closer to Regent Park, exists. We are in negotiation currently on two more on the west side of 77, that we hope will come to.
Two of the six are on the west.
Those, those two greatly affect where, which properties we end up using for these three schools, presuming we get the referendum passed.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing all three high schools on this side of 77 and the traffic flowing as much as we can get back to Mr. Shepherd would be great.
Yes. That is, that is certainly the ideal.
And you're not even in awful.
Uh, no.
It's all his fault.
It's all, yeah.
The ideal plan would put two of the three on the west side of 77.
Andrew, Kristen, I, I think both Lisa and I have been in your shoes previous, and we understand how hard it is to go to people and ask for additional tax money. We do. And I think it's, it's more understandable when you consider how many of us came from the school district and prospered in our productive adult life because of the education that we received. And I can tell you, the education system today is 1,000 times better here than it was when I was in school. So when you look at page 16 of your charts and you're looking at the tradition of excellence, we get a federal accountability rating of A, state report card of excellent, all schools are palmetto gold, average SAT 1144. U.S.'s average is 1060, average ACT 20.8, U.S. 19.8 with greater than 85% participation. And number one in state in eight of T, 10 key benchmarks, number two in the other two. So I think it is without hesitation that anyone would recognize how excellently our schools are teaching our children and, and the education that they're receiving. Our work recently has been to try and bring jobs to Fort Mill so that those students that are getting that excellent education will have an opportunity to earn and spend that money here in our own community. So I've seen a strengthening of the relationship over the course of the last two years and more, maybe more. And I thank the board. I know Wayne's on the board. Shante, you used to be on the board. You know, this is a community issue. It's, it's one of the brightest spots in Fort Mill as our educational institution. And guys, I'm not getting any younger. I want those kids to get really good jobs and pay their taxes and do their part to be independent, because I'm a baby boomer, and that's a big wave coming. So I, I applaud the school district's diligence in the achievement of our students. The council has, yet again, here, I get to read another proclamation. The town of Fort Mill, whereas the town of Fort Mill strongly supports public education and recognizes the importance of public schools, and whereas the town of Fort Mill acknowledges the Fort Mill School District's success in building a reputation of providing outstanding academic opportunities for its students, and whereas the Fort Mill School Board unanimously approved a referendum for March 20th, 2018, to provide Fort Mill area residents an opportunity to vote on the issuance of 190 million in general obligation bonds to address facility-related needs resulting from the area's growth, and whereas the bond funds would be utilized to address vital facility needs, including a new middle school, two new elementary schools, technology improvements, land for future school sites, major facility maintenance, and new buses. And whereas the town of Fort Mill supports the school district's objectives of continually improving facilities, I think somewhere we added a prudent in here, and I don't see it, and upgrading technology to assist in properly preparing the future workforce, remaining active to newcomers associated with new businesses moving to the area and addressing the contemporary needs of children, students of a well-educated community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the town of Fort Mill supports the Fort Mill School District's plan and the passage of the 2018 school bond referendum. So we'd like to present this to you, and we certainly appreciate the efforts. I think it's important too to point out, having done that, that these guys are residents, parents, they don't work for the school district. The school district isn't allowed by law, the board nor the district can go out and campaign thusly. So these are folks that have an interest in ensuring that the schools get what they need to continue their path on excellence. Any other comments by council?
I would just like to make one comment, please. Andrew, way before your time, I was on the school board myself. And actually, I was on for 15 years. And during that period, whenever we had the report for the new students that came in this past year, it was usually 10 students or 15 students. So we did not have to deal with or handle the situation that you're going through now. So we can all certainly sympathize with you and understand you do have a big project ahead of you.
Yeah, I'm with Trudy. I graduated from Fort Mill High. My parents, my mom graduated at Fort Mill High, and we went to schools that didn't have air conditioning. You know, read a comment about how it's important to mitigate sounds. If our windows were open, we died, you know? So it's, uh.
Second floor.
Yeah. It, it's kind of an interesting concept how far we've come. Several weeks ago, I went to Read Across America at one of our schools, and on the technology front, one of the classes, they were doing tiny house design for affordable housing, and oh my goodness, sixth graders. I mean, it was pretty incredible, the world that they're stepping into, you know, because they need to be prepared differently than I did. So I, I do understand. But I do think the word prudent applies, you know, because all of us, including my 82-year-old mom, we've been paying a long time. And we do want to support that the excellence continues. So, but I, I do think that word prudent that we talked about on Saturday when we came up with what we wanted to do is something we have to apply.
You got me in tears over here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And everybody go vote next Tuesday.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to comment on something Council lady Trudy said.
Yes, sir.
She said this guy was before her time. Are you talking about before he was born?
Before he moved to Fort Mill. That's what I'm talking about, not before. All right, Larry.
We'll be feisty tonight. Thank you all for coming this evening. And congratulations again. Thank you. Presentation number four, financial statements for the month, February 2018. Shante Bowler.
She's talking.
That's okay.
Okay, ma'am, I'm coming.
Hey, that's okay. That's okay. That's what we're here for. Thank you for being here.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
How come they always clear out when it's my time?
Well.
Oh, my goodness.
Just thought I'd ask.
We're still here, Shante.
Okay. Good, good, good. Just want to talk just a little bit about February's financial activity. That brings us to five months in, which is 42% as our target goal. February's revenues are still increasing, and a good bit of that is coming from the property tax revenue that we're seeing. Also, we had a payment come in from the state concerning the equipment rentals, which was sizable as well. So we're looking pretty good with our revenues. Our expenditures are also on the rise, but yet we're living within the 42% target range. So all in all, our funds are performing well right now. Last thing I wanted to make mention of is that the audit is complete. And from the agenda, you will be hearing from our auditor, Mr. David Phillips, shortly concerning how we fared with our audit. And the last thing that I want to say is that I try to keep you updated on our financial software project. That's going very well. We spend an awful lot of time either on phone with our new vendor or in person. We have a couple of phone calls this week, two days, and then three days next week, they will have someone here on site. So we're working very diligently to see that project through. It's a lot of work on the front end, but we believe that once it's all said and done, we will benefit greatly from what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have questions for Shante? No? Shante, thank you. And we all look forward to the implementation of the new system because I know that's going to make your life a lot easier.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for keeping us between the lines.
Okay.
Alrighty. And presentation number five, the 2016-17 audit presentation, David Phillips with Green Finney LLP. Welcome.
Great.
Nice to see you.
I don't know if I can match last presentation, but we'll see what we can do. You know, I do want to thank Dennis and Shante. It's a lot of pain for us to be here for them. They got a full-time job and then we're on site kicking tires, checking things, you know, verifying. But again, we appreciate, you know, all their efforts in that regard. But what we have found, if, you know, if we tried to go through this book, we'd probably lose everybody tonight. And so as you know, in years past, we try to just create a quick PowerPoint where we hit the highlights. But I want to make sure if you have any questions as we go along, please interject. Or if you want to wait till the end, that's fine as well. But we'll kind of walk through the PowerPoint and hit the highlights. All right. We'd just like to remind everybody of the importance of internal controls. As you as a council, that should be very important to you because there's thousands of transactions that are taking place and you don't want one person who can do it all. You want there to be checks and balances in life. You want there to be a review and approval process. And so one of the things we're just reminding everybody this year is that when they've done studies of fraud, they always find that there's always three things that are present. One is that there is a need. Somebody has to have a need in their life whereby that they would commit fraud. Maybe someone has, spouse has lost a job. Maybe someone has a lot of medical bills. So there's a need in their life. The second item there is they have to rationalize why it's okay to steal. Sometimes that rationalization is, you know, I haven't gotten a raise in five years and it's not fair. Sometimes a rationalization, I work harder than Suzie and Suzie makes more money than me. The only item on that triangle that you have any control over is the opportunity. And that is where controls really matter. So one of the things that we're trying to do, even as part of the audit, is we're trying to look at your significant internal control processes and making sure they're working, that bank reconciliations are being done. They're being done timely. We're making sure that someone prepares, but someone reviews it and makes sure that someone can't just do the whole process by themselves. So again, just wanted to remind you a little bit about fraud. It's related to any entity and of course, why controls are important. All right, next, the town's responsibility is to prepare these financial statements. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion. We give you reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, because the only way we could give you absolute assurance is that we would have to look at every single transaction that took place. And that would make the audit hundreds of thousands of dollars. But what we try to do is we take samples of big populations. And if we look at that sample and we see that, hey, the controls are working, it got approved, it got coded to the right account, then we can extrapolate that, kind of like with statistics, like they do in polling data for presidential elections. You can kind of get a real good feel if something's working correctly. Again, you have on the last bullet point there, an unmodified opinion, and that's the best opinion you can get. That means we're not aware of anything being significantly wrong. All right, so let's look at your general fund. The fund balance increased 1.4 million. And remember, we're talking about last year. I know you're already in the new year. So again, we're talking about September 30, 2017. You have a little bit of non-spinable and assigned fund balance, but the bulk of your monies are in the unassigned category, which is 8.9 million, or about 58% of your 2017 actual expenditures. And the GFOA, which is kind of like the bible of a government, it stands for the Government Finance Officers' Association, they recommend a minimum of two months. So as you can see, you're in really good stead. And I want you to realize, that's even after you transferred 3.1 million to your capital projects fund. So, you know, think about what it would be if we had left all that money there. You're going ahead and setting aside that money for future infrastructure, future capital needs because you know they're coming. All right, so let's look at why do you want to have a strong fund balance? Remember, some of your revenues are very cyclical. Think about your business licenses, your property taxes. They pretty much all come in at certain times of the year. It helps you for emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. It gives you flexibility. Think about if something bad happens, if you always have to run to the bank to borrow because you have no money in the bank, that didn't give you a lot of options. You have options here. And also, when you issue debt, you get better rates. If they see that you have a good track record, that you have a good stewardship, you're going to get a better rates than somebody else. Also, it helps you to cover potential shortfalls and just important in uncertain economic times. All right, let's move to your revenues for your general fund. Look at that chart. It just has been growing, as you can tell. And you've seen the growth. And that's why those revenues are also increasing. Your total revenues were 18.4 million. You see the biggest buckets there of 6.8 million in property taxes, 6.7 in fines, fees, licenses and permits, and then those other areas as well. Your revenues increased 3.8 million over the prior year. That's a really, probably the strongest increase of any of our clients in the state. And we do over 20 municipal governments. So a 26% increase. One of the things that was new that Shante mentioned was you started getting a pretty heavy amount from the state on this 1.1 million heavy equipment rental fees. That was three quarters last year. You're going to get four quarters of it this year. And so that looks very favorable for you as well. As it relates to your budget, you came in about 3.5 million over budget and it's in those same areas. And again, remember, your staff sure doesn't want to automatically assume because we got it last year, let's up it again another 20%. They're trying to say, you know, let's take even a discount of what we got this year for next year because it can turn very quickly. These growth-oriented revenues like business licenses, if you look back into the Great Recession of 2007, a lot of those revenues were one-half as high as they are today. They can go back just as quickly as they go up if there's a recession. All right, let's look at your general fund expenditures. They were 15.3 million. The various functions there, the biggest of course being public safety, that's pretty normal of what we see across the state, 6.8 million, 2.3 million in general government, 3 million in public works, and then those other categories. This was an increase of 3.6 million over the prior year, primarily due to higher public safety expenditures, due to higher salaries. Remember the increase in the COLA that y'all approved, as well as several new employees, as well as higher benefit costs. You know, the people rates are going up. You've seen what they're doing over the next five years. And then of course, higher capital outlay and some higher public works. But as it relates to your budget, and to me, if I'm a council member, the thing I care most about is the budget because that's something you approved. You said, hey, I approved a budget and I want, you know, my management to adhere to that budget unless they come back to us and ask for more and ask us to approve a budget. You came in 1.1 million under budget. And so when you add the fact that your revenues are coming in over budget, your expenditures are coming in under budget, that creates a pretty big windfall and allows you the ability to transfer some of those funds to the capital projects fund and so forth. All right, let's look at some of your other governmental funds. Your capital projects fund had a net increase in fund balance of $2 million to a net increase of 3.7 compared to the prior year. Revenues were 702,000, which increased to 190,000. Remember, this is where you're recording your hospitality tax funds. In this fund, you had expenditures of about 1,088, and a lot of that related to the new town hall. So again, those funds, that's where they were being utilized for. Remember, you had that transfer we talked about from the general fund of 3.1 as well, based on your fund balance policy. All right, well, let's look at your water and sewer utility fund. Had an increase in net position of 9.1 compared to 6.5 in the prior year. Operating revenues increased about 800,000 or 8% from the prior year, primarily due to higher water and sewer sales, the water fee rate increase of 3%, and just higher water and sewer tap fees. That growth creates a lot more tap fees as well. Your operating expenses increased 1.1. You transferred about $900,000 from the utility to fund to cover the cost of your staff that they're spending on the utility, their efforts. And then just wanted to note to you, you picked up donated infrastructure, a lot of water and sewer lines from like subdivisions. That was 5.7 million. That shows you again, the growth that's taking place within the town limits there. Your stormwater fund briefly had an increase in net position of about 700,000, had revenues of about 700,000, expenses of 300,000. And then you in total had capital assets of about $700,000 in that fund. Now, these are just highlights. Again, in the report, there's a lot of detail if you want to look at that more. All right, well, let's look at these government-wide statements. If you remember back, maybe in the early 2000s, the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they wanted governments to provide a set of financial statements, just like IBM, just like a bank, that are on the full accrual basis of accounting that shows all of your assets and all of your liabilities. Remember, your general fund, it pretty much only shows current assets. Remember, you don't show debt on those. You don't show capital assets on your general fund. But on these government-wide statements, you do. And the total assets there were 94.3 million. Look at the biggest component is your capital assets of 47.8 million. Again, that's your property, your plant, your equipment, your sewer infrastructure, all of your assets. And then you do have cash investments of 43.9 and some other assets and deferred outflows that we mentioned there. You have liabilities of 38.1 million, of which 20 million are your own debt and other long-term obligations. But remember, we talked a few years ago, because you participate in a call sharing plan, we have to record your proportionate share of the pension liability on your books. Well, that liability is 15.5 million. So that's the estimate of what it would take in theory for the state, for them to have enough money to pay for all of your employees when they come due. That's how underfunded they are as it relates to that. You have some other accrued liabilities of 2.6. So if you take those assets minus the liabilities and those deferred items, you're left with net position. It's kind of like equity. You have 60.2 million in equity, of which, and you're kind of rare, you actually have an unrestricted category that's positive. Most of our governments, because of that net pension liability, they've gone negative in their unrestricted because you have such a strong balance sheet in your utility fund and in your general fund and so forth, you actually still have a positive, which is kind of rare.
Can you say that again?
Yeah.
That's kind of rare.
Yeah, it is very rare.
You are the entire state.
Oh, yeah.
We don't get called rare often.
We are special.
Not in that way.
In a bad way. All right. So I talk about that to bring you kind of just a quick slide on this pension liability. It talks about how we have to record your proportionate piece. Well, look at the pension liability. Your piece is 15.5 million. Look what it was last year, 12.5. You picked up an additional liability of 3 million. And part of that is, is that the state plan is done pretty bad. It's not doing well. Number two is you're growing and so you get a higher percentage each year. If you're a community that's decreasing in size or holding constant and everybody else grows, the people that grow get more. Well, you're getting more because you're growing in your size. So again, the increase is really due to the poor experience and the investment returns at the state. Just remember, they're raising rates. They're taking a lot of that 13% rate and they're working it up to 18% over five years. They're taking the 14, 15, moving it over 20%. So you're going to see these rates and how that impacts you. As Dennis and Shante begin to do your budgets for the future, you're going to have more benefit cost. That's how it affects you. You're not going to have to pay the 15.5 million today, but your rates are going to go up. And so your budgeting requirements are going to get tighter because he's going to have to budget for that.
But it also goes up for employees.
That's correct too. But they're a little more capped. They only take it up to about nine and a half, whereas the impact is you as an employer is a lot steeper. All right, there's a lot of disclosures in here. There's about eight pages of disclosures about the pension plan. It will tell you, how do you become a member of the pension plan? What benefits? How much do you have to contribute to the plan? How much does the employee have to contribute? What are they investing in? There's lots of disclosures. So if you want to read that in there, it really is some interesting information to give you a quick snapshot of the state plans. All right, let's briefly look at your capital assets. They increased 14.8 million. We just kind of list what some of those additions were for. 8.3 million in construction in progress. That's primarily relating to the water and sewer project that's been going. You had those donations, remember, we talked about with the water sewer infrastructure that, you know, developments, you transferred over to you. That was roughly 5.6 and then some of those other categories. Then also, you have depreciation expense. So if we set up a bus, we're going to depreciate it over its estimated useful life. We have a building, we're going to depreciate it over its estimated useful life. And at the end of the year, you have construction in progress still ongoing of about 7.7 million. All right, your long-term obligations, which includes your debt, it decreased 1.2 million. Pretty much, you just made regularly scheduled principal payments. There wasn't a lot of unique activity there. Your debt service payments for fiscal year 18 is about 1.9 million. So that's like your annual mortgage payment on your debt is roughly 1.9 for fiscal year 18. All right, well, this is one of the first times this has been in probably over five years. We really don't see any major changes in auditing standards or accounting standards. We've been having a lot of changes. So one good thing is, we don't see anything in the near future. There are issuing some more pronouncements, but they're going to be down the path a little ways. Good thing is, we look at your controls. We try to look at your processes. We didn't come across any findings. We didn't have any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses. We did have to perform a single audit because you received more than $750,000 in federal awards. If you ever go over that limit, we have to do a special audit called a single audit, which he loves and Shante loves. And we looked at your SAFER grant and we didn't see any issues there. Management letter is a little separate letter that you would have gotten. You know, if there was problems that we had with management, we disagreed with Dennis or Shante, we'd have to make you aware of those disagreements and that, how we resolve those issues. This letter's pretty Bowler play. Nothing in it other than just kind of going through the normal accounting, auditing jargon. All right, last slide, again, an unmodified opinion. And again, you just really have a very strong balance sheet, very strong financial condition. I know I go quick. Questions?
We're rare.
In the audit report, where is it? The net income for, and I know it's different.
Yeah, it is. It may be easier for me to just show you in the report because we kind of hit more revenue and expenses. But if you would turn to page 18 in this big fat green book, I know you don't like, that's a little harder to look at. But if you look about the third line from the bottom on page 18, you can see the changes in fund balance. That is roughly net income.
Okay.
But it's not total income because we don't deal with capital assets and debt and that's why they don't count.
Right.
Net income.
So 1.3 that we're looking at?
Correct, correct. And then your capital projects, roughly a 2 million, and you can see across the board.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a question.
Yes.
During 2017, we were very fortunate to have Walter Elijah Park donated to the town. Where does that show up in the audit as an asset?
It would show up whenever the title was given as an asset to the capital assets records.
Okay.
So it would go in as a part of your capital assets.
Okay.
It could be part even of that donated number that we were talking about for infrastructure.
Where would that be in the report?
Yeah, because I looked at land and I know it's worth more than what's down for land.
Use the county tax information. It's a super low number compared to what it really would be.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Because, you know, as we work through several other projects facing us.
And that's honestly real hard for Shante is when you are given something versus when you pay for something. It's easy to track something when you have to write a check for it. When something's given to you, we have to, depending on the way the transaction, where we have to mark it to fair value on certain ones. Some of it's a transfer from another government, you can treat it differently. There's different requirements.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, using their self-value reflects somewhere near the cost.
Because I think about the water tower this year, the complex, the things that we are moving forward with, that we didn't have to write a check for, that we were able to negotiate and get donations.
And if it relates to your governmental and not your utility, it doesn't show up at all in your general fund. Because that's not viewed as a current resource. It's not something you can write a check off of.
Okay.
They gave you land. It only shows up on those government-wide statements. And so it kind of gets hidden because the way the accounting rules work.
Just got the D for that.
Oh, did you?
Good.
It's just important to us as we look at the financial health of the town, the work that we do, what I'm hearing you say, doesn't necessarily translate to the same dollars and cents.
Correct. You wouldn't see, oh, we were able to save, we were given this and we didn't have to spend the money for this and so forth.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you so much.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there? And I know it's been kicked around with the liability of the pension, about pension reform. I know this is a different, I mean, in other towns or in the legislature, Dennis, I mean, you think the state will eventually switch over to more of a 401K?
Oh, yeah. That's exactly what they're pushing everybody to. The new tier three employees, it's an equivalent of 90, years of service and age has to equal 90. So they've already basically pushed everybody away from the other retirement plan and encouraging people to go to 401K.
All right.
I'll remember that.
Let me say one thing on that. You know, other states have their pension plans. The state of North Carolina, for example, until a couple of years ago, they actually had a net pension asset. They actually had more money in the trust fund than they had retirement payments coming due. So they have managed their monies in North Carolina better as a whole compared to us. Now, that could be because their formula isn't as rich for their retirees, but it's probably more likely they were contributing the right amounts from the get-go, and they invested it better.
Well, one thing I heard, South Carolina was, when they went on the Terry Plan, they were not paying back into the retirement plan.
Right. And our investment returns and the fees that we were paying was, we were paying like one of the top three in fees and had one of the bottom three returns. You think if you're going to pay more money to investment advisors to help you earn higher rates of return, you should be in the top three. And we were like in the bottom of that, even though we were paying the most harmless of any state in America until they fixed that problem. So.
It's good they fixed it.
Well, hopefully. We'll see.
We'll see.
Well, thank you very much, David. We appreciate it.
No problem.
All right.
All right, we're going to move into Old Business Item Number One, Second Reading and Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article Two, Requirements by Districts, Section 24, COD/COD-EnCorridor Overlay Districts, so as to clarify the reviewing authorities for projects in the same overlay district, to remove the streetscape lighting standards in the same overlay district, to amend the pedestrian pathways and signage requirements in the same overlay district, and to provide for alternative means of compliance for public uses in the same overlay district. Our staff expert is Chris Pettit. Staff recommendation is to approve. The planning commission recommendation is to approve with modifications. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to move with the modification.
I have a motion and a second. Chris, you want to describe the modifications, please?
Yes, Mayor. At first reading, council had requested that we move forward with revising the ordinance to basically meet what the planning commission had recommended, and that was striking any amendments to the off-street parking section. So the ordinance before you this evening does reflect that. And that was the only change.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Chris? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New Business Items, New Business Item Number One, Resolution Accepting Mears Court and Tattenhall Road Portion in the Springfield Phase 3C subdivision into the Town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System. This is Ward Number Three, Mr. Huntley. Our staff expert is Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept New Business Item Number One.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Council, do you have any questions for Chris? Or Chris, would you like to?
Are these two totally completed?
These are. They do meet the 75% build-out requirement, but I do believe, based off some aerial photography, that I believe almost all the lots have been built on. This is a little picture from 2018. I think that essentially shows that all lots are at least under construction as of February of 18. But it does meet the minimum requirements based off the street acceptance policy of the town.
Thank you.
And these are dead-end roads, so there's no cut-through traffic?
That's correct.
No connectivity. Whew.
No additional construction going to somewhere else.
You mean what Lisa said, doesn't it?
I did. I do.
Are we sure they meet the minimum requirements?
Yes, sir.
And we'd have something to go out there and look at and make sure they're in good shape, they're built.
Yes, they were inspected by our engineers.
And that's a typical policy practice for us. Is that correct?
Correct. The report comes before you. We do have our public works and engineering folks go out and make sure that everything meets the requirements. And there is a warranty period after, as well, in case something happens.
Okay. Everybody hear that? There is a warranty period? It is our standard process to send our staff out to evaluate and ensure that they meet our criteria before we take them in.
Chris, do you happen to know approximately how many more roads in Springfield are there to take in beforehand? Is this, you know, 20% that we'll now have, or just guess?
I believe, I believe probably most of the roads in the Springfield subdivision are within the town. The only ones that we probably don't have are in that newer section, kind of off the Merritt Road area. So I'd say we're probably 80% there, but that is just a wild guess.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New Business Item Number Two, Request to Approve an Agreement Between the Fort Mill Economic Council and the Town of Fort Mill for the Development of a Wayfinding Plan. Our staff expert is Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve New Business Item Number Two.
Do I have a... I have multiple seconds. Chris?
Yes, Mayor. This request would be to approve an agreement between the town and FMEC, Fort Mill Economic Council, to jointly fund and complete a wayfinding plan for the Town of Fort Mill. Generally speaking, what that means is the plan will design and identify the locations for wayfinding signage throughout the town, basically signs that direct people to where we want them to go. So downtown, parking, our parks and recreation facilities, et cetera. So this plan would basically make us build-ready and fund-ready to put signs up throughout the town.
For those that are watching or are here tonight, wayfinding is exactly what it implies. It helps people visiting the town or in the town find their way to parking, additional parking, new parking. It helps them find their way to facilities and buildings in the town that otherwise they might not have any directionals to get them to. And using GPS the way I do, sometimes it's not always in there. So this is a project that we've been talking about for a number of years, and the Fort Mill Economic Group will be helping financially. They're going to make a contribution to this process, working through the town, and it will certainly assist us in phases. It will not be done all at one time. They will be able to put in the new signs, and then we'll put in additional new signs, and then additional new signs. But hopefully, it will help with some of the traffic getting to, from point A to point B more quickly. And certainly, we all look forward to that.
When will that start? Or do we know yet?
We're in the design phase.
I think the process will take about six to seven months to complete, starting, I think, believe, the end of April.
Okay. Any further questions?
So we're paying 50% of the study and then picking up the tab after the study is completed. That's how I read this.
They're going to pay...
750, or 7,500, or just 50% of the study.
If we split 50/50 those first bills up to their 7,500, then you're funding not to exceed 30,000 dollars.
Okay.
Which is what we voted for at budget time.
Yeah, I just didn't read like that.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. I do appreciate the group's efforts to participate in providing funding to help us with that. We don't have too many things come in that direction, so it's always nice to have. So thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New Business Item Number Three, Resolution to Approve MOU for Law Enforcement Support from All Other Agencies to Continue. Our guest expert is Chief Helms.
Move to accept.
Thank you.
New Business Item Number Three.
I got move to accept and a second with lightning-fast speed. Questions?
Americans, take this real quick. Jeff coming up. Basically, this is just an annual renewal of an existing MOU, where they provide joint services with the county.
This provides joint, any type of service, whether it be civil unrest, help us answer calls, us help them answer calls. It basically covers everything. And when we get a new sheriff or a new chief, we have to have a new agreement signed. So with new sheriff this year, we have to have a new agreement.
I think it's pretty important, based on the things we've been through since the first of the year, that those agreements oftentimes provide us with the support. It's not only in an emergency, but the support that helps us handle serious traffic for anything from a large funeral of a beloved police officer, where we could cover each other's territory. It is a critical part of how we operate within our own region to help each other. So I think that's, that's pretty nice to know. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. New Business Item Number Four, Resolution to Adopt the Town of Fort Mill Administrative Policy and Procedure, Social Media Policy. Our resident expert is Debbie Harden. She's with our HR department. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve New Business Item Number Four.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Debbie, you want to talk to us?
Madam Chair, Councilmembers, this is administrative policy, much like a standard operating policy for the employees that use the town's social media platform. The first part of the policy, you've already approved January 22nd with our personnel manual, and that policy iterated the social media that our employees would use on their own, to post their own personal social media platforms. The second part of the policy, the remainder of it, is basically the do's and don'ts for anyone who has access to the social media platforms and the website. So, and those folks are listed on the last page of the policy.
This is the policy I distributed to you when I had workshop.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions for Debbie, for Dennis?
Will this be sent out to the employees to sign off on now that it's an addendum to the handle?
And I think with the change that happens in our world every day related to social media, I bet this won't be the last change and addendum we make to that policy. But I do thank everyone for taking care to recognize that when you're out on that site, you're representing the town as a whole. We have many, many good people that work for the town, and it's unfair to put them in a compromising position by stating things that you may not know to be fact. So certainly appreciate the town and its staff and all of our employees for taking care of the town and itself. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Okay. I think that concludes our agenda for the evening. Noticing that we have some colorful strawberry poster festival coming soon. Pretty nice-looking event here. Caroline is here with us tonight. We are very excited for the strawberry festival to occur on May 4th and 5th. I would appreciate everyone thinking positively for sunshine. It was a tough one last year, not, not to anyone's discredit, but the mud just wasn't so much fun, was it, Caroline? So, you know, Caroline said this is her report card, but she didn't make it rain. So we all think positive for sunshine. Mr. Huntley?
I appreciate everybody coming out and celebrating my anniversary on May 4th.
There you go. Mr. Huntley, for the good of the...
I'd like to thank Debbie for some of the things she's doing now, like the St. Patrick's Day. I think we sent out a little sheet on everybody's birthday. And I'm going to celebrate the healthy parfait by Washington with a bunch of M&amp;M's. But thank you, Debbie.
Jamie?
I just want to thank everybody. The workshop we had on Saturday was probably one of the most productive meetings we ever had, and everybody who put all the work and effort into that really helped us get all the scope and all the answers that we had out there that were kind of floating. We got a lot accomplished. I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work that they did with that.
Lisa?
I want to thank the Boy Scouts that came out tonight. Both my father and my brother are both Eagle Scouts, as well as my godfather. So Eagle Scouts have a warm place in my heart. Also want to thank the people with the Bonner referendum. As Gwen alluded to, it's not an easy job to go out there and try to sell these. She and I both have done it in the past, and it's, it's hard to go representing an entity that you really are put into in just a few short months, trying to learn a lot of questions and a lot of details about the operations of a pretty big employer here in the town. But just remind you, both of those organizations are ways you can get involved with our town. If you really are passionate about our community, get involved. There's a lot of opportunities out there to go make a difference in this world in a positive way. So I encourage everybody to do that and try to find opportunities to do so.
Well said. I concur with Lisa on the Scouts and the referendum in our school district. They all work hard to do excellent work in what area they have chosen to affect. And I think they do wonderful things for all of us, and sometimes it doesn't get noticed. You know, sometimes we just enjoy it and keep moving. I also concur with Larry. Debbie, you have been a breath of fresh air. You are just absolutely targeting employees with health information. It is, it is wonderful to have you on staff, and I appreciate deeply what you've done for us all. We love you. Can't dismiss you either, Virginia, because you just keep us going. I'm telling you. Thank you so much. Caroline, you had a tough job between now and May 4th. It's rough. Jeff and Chipper, I never have had one meeting. I didn't say thank you. I'm not going to start tonight. Thank you. You keep us safe. Noted in the financials, the largest block of the money we spend goes to the most important aspect of our existence, and that's to protect the health and safety of our community. And you guys go way beyond what's expected. We get thank yous on a regular basis for your employees. It's just a continuous stream of can't believe how nice and how kind and how supportive all of your staffs are. And I know that it's because you guys work hard, they work hard. So thank you. Thank you so much. Well?
I agree with all of you, and Debbie, all of our employees. I appreciate everything they do, all the work they do every day. And Jeff, thanks for keeping us safe.
March 4th was my dad's 68th birthday, and we lost a parent back in November. And normally wouldn't, it's just kind of hard to make time to see family when they're not around. But I drove a couple hundred miles this past March 4th to see my dad, because you just never know, you know, when you might not have a parent or a relative or a friend anymore. And, you know, we've had some tough times in our community lately, and I, you know, I really think that, appreciate Jeff and his guys and what all, and Chipper, too, you know, how y'all laying on the line for to keep us safe every day. And just the town staff, good job on the audit report. So good, a lot of towns with boarded-up buildings on Main Street would love to be in our position right now and have the net income that we have and the capital funds project. And just a lot of exciting things that I feel like the next few years are going to change Fort Mill, you know, for many years to come. So good job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trudy?
One of the reasons that I made the comment that I did tonight compares, comparing the number of students when I was on the school board coming in as to what we have now, is to kind of give people a, I guess, a reminder, especially for those of us that have been here for so long. And we, we don't forget what it used to be like. And Ronnie doesn't forget, and Lisa doesn't. But, you know, it has been a large or a very big transformation, if you will, for our schools and our communities to change as much as they have. But that was mainly the reason that I did that. The other, the other comment I'd like to make is about the Boy Scouts. I really am very proud of those two young men. They do go to my church, and that scout troop is from St. John's Methodist Church. And I have been asked several different times to speak for the little, to the little Cub Scouts. And you never know what comes, going to come out of their mouths. You never know what kind of questions they're going to ask. And last couple weeks, two weeks ago, I had to speak, and one of them, we were talking about the schools, civic, being civic-minded, what we could do in our community. And then one little fella wanted to know if somebody could survive a brain aneurysm. And I told him we were not talking about medicine tonight. I told him... I told him we were talking about these other things. He said, well, he wanted to be a doctor when he grew up, so he was just kind of getting my opinion, and I told him, well, I was not a doctor or a nurse or anything, so he was going to have to get that opinion from somewhere else. But they, they do have some good leaders there, and I always enjoy going to speak to them. And the leaders in particular have said to me that they appreciate the town council making the opportunity, given, being given the opportunity for their scouts to receive an award here.
Wonderful. Dennis, you have something you'd like to say?
Few things, Mayor, thank you. First, I want to thank Mayor and Council, we had a great workshop session, everybody put a lot into that, we worked nearly eight hours on a Saturday, so thank you for giving up your time, as well as staffs, I think we had a great session, got a lot done, and it was a great, great day. Secondly, I want to thank our public works guys and our buildings grounds folks for getting our overflow parking lot downtown done in such timely fashion. I would anticipate, David, you can update us, but I know we had some barricades up, but I saw it strike, and we're pretty much done, so when will it open up, do you think?
Our plan are, we need to put the parking blocks in, which we're supposed to go on tomorrow, and then we'll put some shrub around it, and close it, and we will be ready to open.
Super. So, again, town's being very proactive in trying to work to, you know, get more parking for our downtown, to keep it sustainable, and deal with all the new businesses downtown, so thank you for that. Again, I want to thank the staff, you know, the results of the audit might be tallied up in a few months of work, but that is work that is done each and every day all, all year, that we work to make sure that we follow our procurement, that all our accounting standards are up to par, and you heard David say, that's one of the best audits in the entire state, and he told me that personally, so kudos to all our staff and everybody that does what we do each and every day.
Wonderful.
I was going to wrap up and be sure and thank you for the wonderful results in our financial study. I know that's one of your fortes, and we are very fortunate to be rare in the state, I'm going to use that word a lot. I also want to thank Mr. Bivins and all of your staff. We have an issue that many towns are envious of. We have some things going on downtown that people like to come and visit. It's wonderful, and to ensure that we have some parking, it's a temporary solution, but they're doing it very nicely. There'll be some landscaping around the large pad, I looked at it, somebody did an aerial of it, and I thought, looks like a runway, you know? So, thank you for the quick work to get that done, so that we can accommodate those that like to come to our downtown. I think that's fantastic, so I appreciate the hard work and the effort to get that done.
And Mayor, Mr. McCarley had asked about the additional parking on Railroad Avenue, we met with the railroad, we're waiting to hear back from them on identifying what the right-of-way really is. So, if there's an opportunity there to grow some more parking, we're working on that too.
That's excellent.
Thank you for that.
It's just excellent. We did have a wonderful meeting on Saturday, and I know that's a hard thing to actually hear myself saying that I came eight hours on a Saturday and had a wonderful meeting. I think it's important to point out that your town council, these folks on either side of me, work really hard to be here every time they're needed, every time they can make a difference. We have planning sessions, we have special sessions, we do everything that we can to get our arms around how we can continue to keep Fort Mill the beautiful place that it is, and I see some exciting things coming in the very near future, that I think, I think you're going to be proud of us, I think you're going to be well-pleased with the work that we're doing. The other thing that hit me as I closed in tonight, if you think about, we had the American Legion here this evening, those folks volunteered for service. Many of them may have been during the Vietnam era when we were drafting, but they volunteered. And you think about, we used to have a full volunteer fire department, and you think about the scouts, you know, think about the scout leaders that volunteer their time to groom our children into being good citizens and, and productive citizens, and the volunteer boards, the historic review board, the planning commission. Lisa's right, if you really want to get away from this thing and the other electronic device and connect with people in your own community, you want to make a difference, volunteer. So we would love to have folks look for those opportunities and participate with us as we work diligently to keep Fort Mill a great place to live. Any further comments? Hearing done, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right, I've got a motion to adjourn and a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
For him to let that side get one.